If I could have your attention, I'd like to call the October 17th, 2023 Forsyth County Board of Education meeting to order. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Tom and a second by Mike, all in favor, unanimous. Do I have a motion to go into executive session for personnel and legal counsel?
So moved.
Motion by Tom, second by Lindsay, all in favor. If I could have your attention, please. Do I have a motion to come out of executive session? A motion by Wes and a second by Mike, all in favor, unanimous. Do I have a motion to approve personnel A. 1 through 2, B. 1 through 5, and C. 1 through 8?
So moved.
A motion by Tom and a second by Mike, all in favor, unanimous. I'd like to welcome everybody to our meeting tonight. Now, we're going to, as we stand, to say the pledge. We're going to take a moment for silent reflection. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first on our agenda, we have recognitions with Mr. Derek Kershey.
Well, good evening. My name is Derek Kershey, Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, and I am honored to recognize several of our staff and community partners today. First, would like to congratulate Stacy Doctor, 8th grade social studies teacher at DeSanna Middle School. Ms. Doctor was selected as the 2023 John Morton Excellence in Economic Education Award winner. Stacy, come on forward. The award sponsored by the Council for Economic Education recognizes three teachers, I believe nationally. Is that true? Congratulations. Each year who use exemplary teaching techniques to improve their students' economic understanding, both in and out of the classroom. Congratulations. Great job. And if you are a family, friend, or colleague of Ms. Doctor, would you please stand? Congratulations. The Board of Education has also decided to recognize a grant for the Forsyth UNG Teacher Residency Program. I am thrilled to introduce Dr. Michael Shannon, President of the University of North Georgia, who is here today to share more information with us. Dr. Shannon?
Well, thank you. Good evening. It is a privilege. Thank you to the board for having us, and it is always great to be here. Good to see you, my friend, and thank you for the opportunity, for the partnership with the University of North Georgia. This program is really special to us, and I'm going to give you a couple of highlights and give you a few numbers that I think are important. We received a $399,000 grant in federal funds earmarked by former U.S. Rep. Carolyn Bordeaux, and these funds allow our participants to be a part of this teacher residency program. These are full-time teachers of record with their own classrooms, receiving half of the salary as of a full-time educator, and then they do receive benefits to include part of the teacher retirement package. The funding is designated for seniors in our program, pursuing bachelor's degrees in elementary and special education, middle grades education, and secondary education. There are seven students currently who are residents in Forsyth County schools, so we think that's really exciting, and Dr. Bearden, I'm sure you do as well, and you want like a thousand more.
Yes.
We already got that. Sherry knows that well, so. The congressional funding paid these students these resident salaries for the year and provides $1,000 for their mentor teachers. So that's a great deal, right? So the students and the mentors who are investing in our students will end up becoming your teachers. So this is, this is really, really exciting. And these are, these mentors are teachers here in Forsyth County and are in the same school as each of these residents, so you can see how amazing this program is. They receive $2,000 in funding out of their classrooms, $225 in offset travel because they have to go to summer boot camp. And I don't think that that's like push-ups, that's teaching boot camp, but that suffice to say, we made sure that that's taken care of. They are eligible for 12 or about $1,300 in funding to cover the cost of an endorsement program at UNG, and those are things such as ESOL, reading, gifted, autism, computer science, those types of endorsements. And then we will also reimburse the candidates for their GACE content assessment. So this is an incredibly amazing program. We are honored to be here to share. We value the partnership with Forsyth County, our coming campus. Many of you know Dr. Crowe and the work we are doing there. We are doubling the size of our building. If you haven't been there lately, that'll be ready early next year, and we are excited to do more and serve more in Forsyth County. So thank you for alighting the University of North Georgia, be a part of the amazing work you all do in your county and in your schools. And so with that, I'm going to ask Sherry to come up and tell you really about the exciting stars of the show. So if you don't know, this is our amazing dean of our School of Education. She has, don't tell the other deans I said this, she has the hardest dean's job at the University of North Georgia because, as you all know, teaching teachers is a, is a lot of work, and so Sherry does it brilliantly, serving across our five campuses, and Sherry makes all the magic happen. So with that, Dean Arden.
Thank you, Dr. Shannon. And I just want to follow up by saying how proud we are of these students that we're going to recognize tonight. They are a phenomenal group of students and educators, and we're also just grateful to be here to celebrate this funding. Like Dr. Shannon said, the funding pays for a multitude of things, but $2,000 to outfit your classroom for not only a first-year teacher, but these are still students, too. They're paying for their own education, so that money goes a long way to creating better classroom environments for, for all of our students. So we're very grateful for this. The congressional funding is limited in, in terms of the amount and also time, but this program is not. The residency program will go on, and these students are paving the way for future residents to come. So they are, they are really change makers. Also, we created this program, I just wanted to say this as well, that we call these students residents because we wanted it to mirror a model, like a medical professional model, medical professional doctor who paid residencies. We want to elevate the field of teaching because teachers are heroes and they're not often recognized as such. This is a hard job. It's a challenging job, but it's also one of the most rewarding professions out there. Behind every great person is a multitude of great teachers, and that's what these students are doing. They're paving the way for future teachers, and they're out there doing the work, and it's, and it's hard work, so we appreciate them. I'd like to recognize each one of them individually. Some of our students couldn't be here tonight. They had class. We told them not to skip. We have three here with us tonight, but I still want to say their names, and all of them are actually listed on this PowerPoint here. So we have Morgan Adams from Midway Elementary School, Riley Kleiberg, who's at Whitlow Elementary School, Autumn Edmondson at DeSanna Middle School, Maggie Lewis at Hendrix Middle School, John Orr at Liberty Middle School, Anna Williams at Whitlow Elementary School, and Caitlin Wright at Coming Elementary School. So if we could give them a round of applause. And then because they always say it better than we do, I invited John Orr, one of our residents, to, to tell you a little bit about his experience. So I'll turn it over to John.
So my name is John Orr. I am a student of the Teacher Candidate Residency Program, which has afforded me the opportunity to be a proud teacher of the Forsyth County School District and a proud member of the Liberty Middle School family. I was asked to speak on my experience in the TCRP in Forsyth County. I immediately gravitated towards the moments following my interview at LMS, mainly because following my interview, I got into my car to go home, and I immediately called my mom because there's no one in my mind that I thought I'm going to call her. And as soon as she answered the phone, she asked how did it go? Without realizing the significance of the words I was saying, I said, "Mom, I'm going to be so upset if I don't get this position." I absolutely loved them. It felt like home. A week later, which did feel like a thousand days, I received a call from LMS letting me know that they wished for me to join the LMS family. At the end of the call, Courtney Mallory, one of the assistant principals at LMS, said, "John, we're so happy you are joining the Patriot family. Welcome home." This is the best way I know to describe my experience at Forsyth: home. And like any good home, much like Forsyth County's mission, I may have felt, I have felt that I am safe, connected, and thriving. Safe, being that I have consistently been checked in on by just the admin team, my mentor teacher, neighbor teachers, and so many more. Connected, being that I have been connected to an amazingly supportive admin team, a collaborative team who I, just words cannot describe, and a mentor teacher who, no matter the time or day, is there to help when I've ever had any questions or concerns. Lastly, is thriving, being that through professional development and real-world experience, I have learned more in the past three months than I ever imagined to be physically possible. That said, despite it being just a brief period of time, my experience as a residency candidate in Forsyth County has been incredibly beneficial. I am beyond grateful to Forsyth County School and Liberty Middle School for allowing me to be a part of this district and school. I passionately believe that these opportunities will continue, allow both myself and my fellow residency candidates to grow into the well-rounded educators that Forsyth County is so well-known for. So thank you, and I have to say, "Go Patriots."
And just really quickly, and then we'll get out of your way and let you go on with your board meeting, but these students did not stand when I called out your name, so if you could all stand and be recognized, let's give them one more round of applause. And I also wanted to recognize, we have two faculty co-coordinators for this program, and Dr. Paula Tinch is one of those coordinators here tonight. Thank you.
Let's give them one big round of applause. Great job, UNG. And Dr. Shannon, yes, from the HR department, we want a lot more. And Mr. Orr, you are the new official spokesperson of the Human Resource Department. Great job. Lastly, I would like to introduce for our superior spotlight Alyssa DeGlinberto, Principal at Johns Creek Elementary School. Welcome.
Elementary has to represent. So we are the Jaguars. We're so, so excited to be here presenting with you today. And as you heard before, we are really working hard at all of our schools and at Johns Creek on making sure that all of our students, staff, and families feel connected and belonging. So tonight, we wanted to share with you guys a little bit about the things we're doing this year at Johns Creek and things we've done previously at Johns Creek to make sure everyone feels like they're part of the Johns Creek Jaguar family. So a little history of JCE. JCE's demographics have changed in the 17 years that we've been open. In about 2014, our Caucasian and Asian population completely flipped, and we became a majority-minority school. In thinking about the first year we were open in 2008, our white population was about 75%, whereas now this year, about 74% of our population is Asian, which is mostly Indian and South Korean. And we talk a lot about Johns Creek. What better way can you learn about the world around you than from sitting in class, sitting in lunch, talking to students about what their cultures, traditions, and customs are? So one of the things that we are so proud of that we have every year at Johns Creek is a Heritage Night, and this year will be year 15, that we've had such an amazing night to showcase all of the cultures and customs of our school. Usually, we have anywhere from 10 to 15 countries represented. Our parents come in their native dress. They do crafts. They bring food from all of their cultures to share. They talk about the education system, how things are similar and different, and even during COVID times when we couldn't have an in-person event, we decided to make a Johns Creek cookbook from our kitchen to yours. So we did recipes where all families could submit recipes to share. So that's one of the exciting items we do every year, not only to recognize all the cultures and customs, but to celebrate it and as a community to learn more about those who are our neighbors and friends around us.
Good evening. I'm Suzanne Pitts. I'm one of the assistant principals at Johns Creek, and it's our pleasure to be here this evening. Tonight, I wanted to talk to you guys a little bit about one initiative that we have undertaken to make sure that our students are represented in our building. And amazingly enough, when we started talking about doing this project, I thought I really knew our kids. And what we did is we compiled a survey of our families, asking where they're, where they're from, what languages they speak, and about their cultures. And amazingly enough, we had a very high percentage of our families respond to the survey. Oftentimes, we're begging people to respond, but not in this case. They were responding in droves, which made us very happy. We had over 57 countries that are represented in our school, and as you can see by our bulletin board, these are all of the countries that are represented, including countries that you might not expect: Hungary, Ethiopia, Sri Lanka, Peru, Estonia, Jordan, Egypt, even St. Kitts and Nevis, the Cherokee Nation. So while we thought we knew our demographics and our students really well, we didn't realize what we didn't know. Another interesting thing that came out of this project was hearing about the different languages that are spoken in the homes of our students. Languages, we have a total of 35 different languages that were reported, some Arabic, Mandarin, Khmer, Swahili, Japanese, Urdu, Serbian, Nepalese, Punjabi, and Turkish, just to name a few. And so as you can see, this has become quite a, quite a hub in the mornings where kids like to come and see what, what, where their flag is, and we've had a couple since then request, "Hey, I didn't get to fill out the survey, but we're from here. Can you add that to it?" So it's kind of a work in progress and an ongoing thing, but it's something that has really helped us as a leadership team know our students and families better, but it has also given our students representation in our building, which is very important. In addition to building this display, we've also asked for information from the families on things that they felt were most important about their cultures, and we're able to share this information with our families in our monthly newsletter. And so it's kind of interesting, even here, I learned things about the Chinese language being a tonal language, where the way, the tone that you say a word changes its meaning, which is very different than in English. And so even still, we're continuing to learn more and more each day as this project continues, and we're having a great time sharing it with our community and making sure that everyone feels connected at Johns Creek Elementary.
Good evening. I'm Kayla Fawcett, and I'm an assistant principal at Johns Creek Elementary. One of our other initiatives is the multilingual library, and this is something that we're so proud of because it really connects our students to their cultures. This is something that we were granted through our Education Foundation grant. We have already a little over 150 books that are in all of these languages that you see listed: Mandarin, Korean, Japanese, and we've also ordered more. So in the next few months, we hope to have over 200 books available for our students and our families in these additional languages that we've learned about through this survey. Here are some photographs of some of our students. You can see how it's organized in our media center. Our students take great pride in it, and our staff members take great pride in it. It's such a wonderful place for our students to feel like they're connected to each other. In addition, we have, through our own research and through the survey responses from our families, tried to learn more about the spices that are found in the most common recipes throughout the different cultures that are represented, and we were able to purchase these seeds so that we can grow them on campus at Johns Creek. Also, through the Education Foundation grant, we have tower gardens, and so through our science specials, our students, kindergarten through 5th grade, get the opportunity to be a part of planting and growing these seeds. Their tower gardens will be housed in our cafeteria, so our students will see that on a regular basis and just continue with that pride, knowing where those came from. Some of the seeds that we've purchased so far: holy basil, mint, coriander, cardamom, cilantro, and thyme, just to name a few. And as we end tonight, we want to thank you for your time. We also would love to invite you to our Heritage Night. That's going to be taking place on Friday, November 3rd, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Johns Creek Elementary. Thank you.
Thank you. That's awesome. We're going to take a short recess, and if you were here for recognitions and would like to slip out, now would be the time. And we'll resume in, and we'll resume in three or four minutes. We're back. If I could have everybody's attention, we will move on. Next, we have a, the public participation on agenda items. I'm sure everybody knows we have a timer here. You get three minutes. When the yellow light comes on, there's 30 seconds, and when it blinks, there's 10. Is that correct? And then it buzzes. First, we have on the list is Jason Potter. Is that correct? If I mispronounce your name, just tell us what it is when you get here.
Jason, will you turn that mic on, please? Thank you. Test one, two. All right. Yeah, Jason Potter. Thanks for giving me the opportunity here. I don't need three minutes. I'm a community member of Bentley Road, so here today, just to make sure you all remember we all came out and represented greatly opposed to moving us from a school we're three, three miles away from to a school that we would be a little over six miles away from. And after we left that meeting, we felt like a large portion of our community probably didn't even realize this was happening because not everybody's plugged in, right? So we made sure to do our best to make sure everybody in those communities understood the plan and shared the plan with them, and we also gave them opportunity to sign a petition, which is now at 129 signatures off Bentley Road. This was emailed to Tom on October 7th. I know you all reconvened on October 10th, I believe it was. We tried to watch that online. It didn't seem like there was a lot of change coming. And I think one of the things I heard quoted was, "Well, Bentley Road will just have to get on campground." That's not a viable solution. If any of you all actually live on Bentley and you understand that turning left on the campground, it's a very small road, and then when you get down to Highway 9, the turning lane there only permits about two cars at a time, so one bus might be able to get in that turning lane, and the rest is just, we're going to move the traffic from post and just put it on campground as well. We're forced to make a left turn, which is more dangerous. On and on and on. We can go on and on. Like, everybody came and spoke up, but I just wanted to make sure everybody knew about that petition. And we're here representing everybody on Bentley, still greatly opposed. You heard John just a moment ago call his school his home, and that's exactly how we feel on Bentley. Vicry is our home. Please don't make us move our children from our home. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Robert. I'm not sure about the last name. Sorry.
It's Chirilla.
Chirilla.
Yeah, that's fine. Hi, everyone. My name is Robert Chirilla. I'm from Bentley Farms neighborhood on Bentley Road. I'm here to talk about the redistricting plan. I heard a rumor that you, you guys are planning on pushing it back by one year. If that's true, I welcome that. Thank you for listening to all of us last time. If that's not true, I'm here to remind you and give you some additional arguments as to why you shouldn't vote for this redistricting plan. The main, the main reason is that it is not in the public interest, at least for the Bentley Road families. Study after, study after study conducted in the U.S., Germany, Canada, China, show that the longer the commute time for children, the higher the negative impact it has upon their well, psychological well-being and educational achievements. And for some reason, in looking at all the neighborhoods that are being affected by this redistricting plan, the Bentley Road neighborhoods are the only ones for which the commuting time is doubling, well, sorry, let me rephrase that, commuting distance, right? Because those two are two different things. Commuting distance doubles for all the neighborhoods on Bentley Road. Commuting time probably is going to triple just because of everything that's going to happen, the way you rearrange the, the map. And all the other neighborhoods that are being involved in, with this redistricting plan do not have the same change. So why are you targeting us? It doesn't make any cha, it doesn't make any sense. It's very disappointing that I have to waste my time, they have to waste their time to come here to advocate for you guys to take action to benefit our children when that should be your number-one priority. That's why you're elected. That's why you've been hired, Dr. Bearden, to take care of our children and their psychological well-being, and make sure that they have a very high educational achievement in the, in Forsyth County. And I can tell you, this redistricting plan makes it clear to us that when you assessed the county overall, this factor, commuting time, commuting distance, was not one of the factors that you considered when you redrew the map. And so I'm asking you today, take another stab at this plan. If you are not pushing it back by one year, just cancel it. You made a bad decision building Midway where it is, that you should not double up, double, well, I think I'm speaking now, but you should not double up on that mistake, and make us send our kids five, six miles away when currently they're going only two miles away.
Thank you.
And thank you.
Okay, next, we have Diraj.
Hello, everyone. I'm Diraj, and I'm, I'm in the neighborhood West Lake on the Bentley Road, and this is again the same, same subject, which is redistricting. So basically, piggybacking on what Robert said, and my friend Jason also said, there are few more points which I wanted to make sure that, you know, we, we are being heard on that is emotional environment. Right now, we have Vicry Creek Elementary, we have Vicry Creek Middle School. Our kids go there. They, the friends with whom they grew up in elementary, they grew with the same friends in Vicry Creek Middle School as well. But now, if we change from Vicry Creek to Midway, they will graduate from the elementary from Midway, but they will have to come back to Vicry Creek Middle School. That means the belongingness with the teachers, with the student, and the friends, and the families, that's, that will be disrupted. Second thing is, even though when we think about the commute, when we have to go to the Midway Elementary, we have to cross the Vicry Creek Elementary School by the post road. Post road is already crowded. In the morning, there is a heck of cars over there. How do we pass on them? It will add more chaos. There, there would be chances of hazards at every point. Considering that, we request you guys to please reconsider this decision and help us. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you. And Kelly Newman?
Hi. I'm representing--
Hi, um, I'm representing Fieldstone. Um, we are also very against leaving Kelly Mill. Um, just in start, in the short course that we've, you know, heard this proposal, we really haven't heard any long-term numbers, you know, past the two-year marker. So you're moving tons of families to different schools, disrupting all these kids. And then what? In two years, you come back and it's a different scenario? Because it doesn't seem like a long-term fix. It seems like a Band-Aid over a much bigger issue. Um, as a current member of the board, you currently have a constituency who's really happy with the jobs that you've all done. But given where we stand in the proposal, and obviously we're Bentley and a lot of other people stand, um, we're all going to be very unhappy with the move that this takes on our kids. Um, we know that moving schools isn't the end of the world. We've heard from a lot of you that your kids all had to move, and that's great. But we're here for our kids now. And it's not the same as it was, you know, ten, twenty, whatever, years ago. It's a huge, huge part of who they are, how they spend their day, their community, their friends. You know, this is their bubble, their circle, their safety. Um, and then to make them, like we've said, move, make new friends in middle school, which is already a really hard place to be anyway, is just another disruption, you know, to their life. And we just really, really want to encourage you to look at that. It's our home. We love it and we want to stay.
Okay, that's all the public participation. We have signed up for agenda items. Next, we have our consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? I assume everybody's went over it and answered, getting questions answered. Do I have a motion to approve? A motion by Mike and a second by Lindsay, all in favor. Unanimous. And next, we have the finance report. Mr. Larry Hamel.
Good afternoon or evening.
Good evening.
So tonight, we'll discuss the September 2023 financial statements. As always, we keep goal free in mind when we talk about the financial statements. So for this month, we started the month off with $103 million in cash. Ended the month with, uh, just slightly below $190.9 million. Uh, this time last year, we are at $69.6 million. The, as you can see, the, um, cash receipts and cash dispersments are both a little bit higher than usual this time of this year. Uh, the main reason for dispersments is the increase in the teacher salaries. That was part of last year's budget. If we look at the revenue detail, uh, you can see that we are at 15.99%. Collections already, this time last year, we're at 14.51. We're slightly ahead, uh, in the tangibles, real estate, and the tax area, as well as the interest earned. We're a little bit behind Avalarm. And that's just because the bills went out a little bit later, about a week or so. So we're about a week or two behind on the money right there. If you look at the expense report, um, activity is normal for this time of the year. We're at 25.33% expense. Uh, this time last year, we're at 24.88. We're slightly ahead. And that's more of a timing issue than anything else. On the debt service cash analysis, this time last year, we had about $119.4 million. We're down to 89. And of course, since we lower the mill rate by one mill, we're collecting less money. And we have that money reserved, both in the general funds, SPOS 5, to make up for the difference. Special revenue funds are where they need to be this time of the year. Um, the reason you don't see the original budget, revised budget is, is we're still waiting for some of our federal programs to be approved. So basically, we're working off last year's reserve balances uh, for the month of July, August, September, before everything goes full bore with all the approvals October 1st. Uh, it is October 17th. It's unusual not to have everything approved officially. And you work off last year's numbers. On capital projects, we're at $12 million. Uh, this time last year, we're at 12, 27.8. Um, we are fast spinning down. SPOS 4 is completely paid out. We're done with that. The 2016-18 bonds were paid out with the land purchase we had recently. Uh, the SPOS 5 is dedicated, every, all the money is dedicated for that fund. And the 2018 bonds are down to like the last $4 million that are not dedicated. So we're doing a good job of making sure we get that money spent the way it should be. School nutrition is $18 million cash balance. This time last year, it was 17.5. You will notice that the expenditures were greatly higher than revenue. Um, September is, is a somewhat full month. And it takes about a month or two for GDOE to get us all the money they owe us. They're sometimes a little bit slow. That's why that number's a little bit low.
Did we have a, a, a spend down for the food service?
Yes, we do.
And is that?
That's, that's a two to three-year process to get that money spent down. Uh, and that's what we agreed with, with the state of Georgia.
And we're still in that?
Yes, we're in that, that series. Investment-wise, once again, uh, the thing I do want to talk about is we're trying to push as much of this money to investment because of the high rates. Uh, currently, we have $98 million in there. And this time last year, we only had 75. So we increased that by about $23 million. Um, the one area that is robust right now is the SPOS 6 money. It's coming in pretty well. Uh, we're a little bit ahead of schedule there in collections, about six months right now. So we'll see how that goes. Uh, as you can see, um, I do want to point out, if you go back all the way to February 2023, collection month, for the month received of 2023, and you go across, you see it's a negative point zero five. We're kind of like in a holding pattern right now. Last month, for August and July, there was a, some of an uptake. But I associate that with everybody getting ready to go back to school, buying stuff, kind of. As you can notice, it's only 3.49. That kind of tells me that we are not in a recession, but it also tells me we're not doing as well as we were in the first six months of the year in terms of, uh, what was going on spend-wise. A lot of people are slowing down what they're doing. Rates are really high right now. Inflation is still above, um, 5% to 6%. And housing costs are raising to about 8% for our mortgage now. On the cash receipts for elementary schools, uh, we have about $4.6 million. This time last year, we had about 4.5. And the receipts and dispersments you see are, are on average. For the middle school, we have about $2.4 million. This time last year was about 2.36. And high schools is 6.3 versus about 5.8. And once again, receipts and dispersments are average for this time of the year. Overall, we got about $13.4 million in the school books, uh, compared to last year, a little bit, uh, brought around about 13 million. And the percentage breakdown is about the same as it was this time last year. Are there any questions about September 2023?
Got any questions? I think so. Thank you.
All right.
Okay, next, we have our action items. And on it is the 2024-25 Elementary Schools Redistricting Map.
Good afternoon. Good evening. At this time, I would ask Dr. Bearden to present the 24-25 redistricting plan as submitted at the previous work session to the Board of Education for your approval.
Recommend the Board approve the 24-25 Elementary School Redistricting Map as presented last week.
Do I have a motion to approve? Motion by Lindsay to have a second. Second by Mike. Discussion?
Yeah, this is, this is a hard one. We've, uh, spent a lot of time, and I want to say thank you to the other board members and to the staff, because I think I created a lot of angst. And we looked at everything we could. We tried to fix the post road, road. Uh, it's broke and we need to fix post road. Uh, as a community, we need to band together and fix that. Uh, that's one issue we have in that community. Uh, I was trying to look at how we could readjust something in order to help with that. And there was really no way to do that and still meet the goals which we set forth in this redistricting. And a lot of it was about opening Midway. We either overpopulate Kelly Mill at 117% uh, or take Midway down so low that the staffing levels become issues. And so everything we tried to fix it with cost an issue. So we toiled over that many, many days, trying to figure out what it looked like. I know Mitch, thank you for grabbing all the data we needed and trying to figure it out. And so it was a very difficult thing. And I think one other thing I'll say about the plan is it did uncover a lot of things. And after a lot of reflection, you know, we've gone through a lot over the last two or three years. We went through COVID. We had to figure out staying in school, not staying in school. We also had to go through with their teacher raises and get them caught up to where they need to be as a profession. And we heard today some great things, you, you know, North Georgia's doing to help us with our teaching. Um, and now it's time to look back at our facilities and growth. As I looked across the district, we're running, I think, about 95% capacity, uh, which is not unusual because the state is not going to pay for students that aren't here yet. And we know we're going to grow. We always have. Uh, if the economy picked up, which Larry kind of alluded to, it's kind of staying flat right now. But soon as that economy picks up, the growth is going to start happening. And we have to kind of have our plan together and ready. So I, you know, tell Dr. Bearden and staff, next year, let's focus on that. Let's make that one of our initiatives to talk about where we see those issues at. Where some growth came and we're changing how we live in Forsyth. A lot of mobility is coming into play. We have a lot of housing that is changing. While we need some affordable housing, we're getting a lot of apartments and things that cause a different type of planning with facilities. So we're going to have to look at that and really get together as a plan and put our head together and try to look through. And I, I heard somebody say, you know, a long-term plan, get that back out in the public. We, for a long time, we had a good 10-year plan. We were going. But a lot of the growth was residential. We saw it. We knew what we were looking at. We had a sheet that kind of told us. And we, man, we hit it on the, you know, nail on the head many times with that growth. So we're kind of looking at what that looks like. And we're trying to do that again. But we have to look at it through a slightly different lens because we've got a different community now. And we have to look at that. So I think there's some things we have to do for the future. But for this one, we've done all we can. We beat our head on the wall. We tried to change some things, looking at everything that could be changed and still meet the goals which we've set out for. And we, we now have Midway at a good place where they can open. We've relieved a little bit of overcrowding. There's still some more. We need to talk about that. Uh, but that's to come.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I think for me, the, um, the goals, you know, redistricting is really hard and it's a tough decision. And I've talked to so many people in the community over the last couple of weeks. And even after feedback, uh, from the community, we made some small changes where we could uh, because we know the great impact. But it come down to the, the two goals that we established, to, um, occupy Midway. And we have established that to occupy a school successfully, I think, has been, you know, in the eighties, 80%. Uh, I think where we can work moving forward is what does it look like when we relieve the schools? Goal, goal number two, right? Uh, and maybe that's to Tom's point, to have a long-term plan. What does that look like? Where are we purchasing property at and things along those lines? So I agree with Tom. I think we do a better job at that part.
Well, I just want to say thanks to you, Mitch, Matt, and the whole team. You know, we put a ton of work into this. I know everybody did. So I, I, my, my gratitude to the rest of the board as well for, for really looking at this every which way. Uh, I am, I'm satisfied that we have a plan to accelerate the relief to Mashburn, which is something that I know we're all, we're all concerned about. And, um, you know, redistricting is not easy. We, we've really tried to, uh, to find what solutions we could. And I just wanted to go on record and say that I'm hopeful, glad that we're going to pivot a little bit and focus on some long-term planning. And, and, you know, growth is a complex thing. We don't control it. We don't have a say in it. Um, but we have to react to it. And the way school funding works, we usually have to react in arrears, right? So that creates a lot of discomfort in the community. But, um, we'll continue to work and, and try to find a solution.
Anybody else? Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Unanimous. Okay. Next, we have points of information. Dr. Bearden? Okay, we'll take a short recess and then we will have, um, public participation on non-agenda items. And we will now have public participation. Speaker went off. Good afternoon or evening.
Evening. Last month, there was concern that some teachers were unfairly being described as groomers or peddlers. Both of these things are immoral and shameful. So it's understandable people might feel offended if they're unjustly accused. To help clarify things, I thought we might offer a few ways of knowing when you might be a groomer so that people can avoid being confused with these people predators. If you think that tomboys are boys, you might be a groomer. If you think that it is important for teachers to know what kinds of things sexually excite the children they teach, you might be a groomer. If you think it is important for children to know what kinds of things sexually excite the teachers they learn from, you might be a groomer. If you think that children who have not yet experienced their natural sexual development can make medical decisions that will leave them with permanent sexual dysfunction, you might be a groomer. If you think children should have school clubs based on sexual identities or sexual attraction, you might be a groomer. If you think a child's cross-sex ideation should be kept secret from their parents, you might be a groomer. If you think it's important to teach a child that a family with two mommies is perfectly normal but don't want to tell them that fatherless homes are bad for children, you might be a groomer. If you think adult men need an actual measurable medical reason to get a testosterone prescription, but teenage girls only need to express a psychological desire for it, you might be a groomer. If you believe children should be exposed to books with graphic sex and they should be comfortable about talking about sex around adult strangers without their parents present, you might be a groomer. If you support drag queens reading to young children in libraries, you might be a groomer. If you support taking children under 18 to drag queen shows, you might be a groomer. If you can't tell the difference between Mrs. Doubtfire cross-dressing in a caricature of a nanny and RuPaul's Drag Race where they are caricatures of strippers, you might be a groomer. When we normalize the discussion and expression of personal sexuality at school, we end up with young girls and boys bragging casually about their sexual exploits, destroying the learning environment of those children who would like to concentrate on academics. Sexuality should be a private matter, not a public concern. And our staff and teachers should model that modesty by deferring sexuality questions to parents and keeping sexuality discussions outside of school. I'd like to ask the Board to consider getting rid of school clubs that are based on race or sexual identity. It may be perfectly appropriate to have an anti-bullying club, but a club exclusive to straight white males and their allies is divisive and unnecessarily centers student sexuality in the eyes of staff and teachers. School is a professional space. And when you bring explicit sexualization into that space, you are creating a hostile work environment for everyone. And so on that note, thank you very much for your time. And again, I'd love to have lunch with anyone who deserves it.
Thank you. Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion by Lindsay and a second by Tom. All in favor? It's unanimous.